We'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody here in chambers and those who might be either viewing online or participating through the Internet. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric is excused this evening. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
We see him.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Meredith. We would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation that will be given by Administrative Pastor Richard Felton from the Kingman First Southern Baptist Church. And if we could all stand for that, those who would like to participate, and afterwards we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Felton's not here, so we just bow our head in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilor Ward, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS-38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First on our agenda, item number one, awards and recognition. One, a proclamation of National Literacy Month. And I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas literacy is the most, single most effective way to promote global prosperity and eliminate poverty, and cultures that are literate embrace the key lever of change for economic development, social growth, and environmental protection, and cultures best promote and support democracy, political stability, and peace based on many factors, but rely on, as a pivotal factor, literacy. An assurance of literacy for all citizens best promotes peace, human rights, environmental protection, and prosperity. And literacy brings improved self-confidence to the individual, a heightened sense of belonging, and improved job opportunities. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Kingman, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Literacy Month, and further declare September 8th, 2024, as International Literacy Day. I strongly encourage each of us to recognize the contributions made by our local literacy program, KLP, the Kingman Area Literacy Program, as they continue to provide 100% volunteer-run, 100% free tutoring services for all in Kingman, as well as all other literacy and adult education programs in Mojave County, for the significant contributions they have made and continue to make in our community. And of course, I have signed this proclamation. We are proud of this organization and what they do for our community, and of course, we encourage literacy. So many points that were read that this proclamation points out how we can be better human beings because we're literate. I know, Annie, you have on here George Gage Telford? Yes, Gage. Tedford, I'm going to say Tedford. Yeah, if you'd like to up in council, would you like to come up with me, please?
Just right here.
There's only a few of you.
There are more.
Please, come.
Thank you.
All right, there, perfect.
Gage.
Other way.
Thank you, guys, for having us here.
Gage, I'm working at school there.
Oh.
Yeah, I work at the Row.
So, and yes, and Gage has a couple of things, comments he'd like to make.
So, thank you, guys, everyone. I am Gage Tedford. I'm the outreach coordinator at Kingman Area Literacy Program. So, I do anything that's public. I respond to emails, text messages, anybody that wants to sign up, I am the one that they go to. So, as of January, we're going to be starting a great program. We're going to be having, taking 100 families with, from second to fourth graders. They have to have at least one student, and we're going to be giving them free online tutoring to all the families. We're also going to be giving them one computer each, for each student. So, that's already a big task in itself, but we also plan on asking 60 people from the community to try to give their time and effort to this free tutoring program. As you guys know, Kingman Literacy Program is 100% volunteer-run and 100% free. So, we try to emphasize that in everything we do. None of us get paid, none of us get any compensation for this. We really just do this out of the kindness of our heart, and we are so happy for this program because, as you guys know, we live in a poverty-stricken area, you know. I grew up with, you know, low-income family, you know, not learning how to read and everything. So, it's a great opportunity for Kingman to have this, you know? So, I'm really happy. Thank you, guys, and for everything.
Thank you, Gage. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. First up, we'd like to ask Joshua Baker Cooper to come forward.
Thank you, guys. So, I work with the homeless on a daily basis. I try to do my best to try to help them. Problem is, is this city seems to treat the homeless as they are, you know, less than good, less than people. There are signs around town that say it's not okay to give to panhandlers. Unfortunately, with that comes starvation. I had to personally use my own money to bury two homeless people due to not being able to get water last month. And the, they weren't able to get water and/or food, and it caused them to unfortunately perish. Something needs to be done to allow the homeless to get what they need to survive because not everybody has a freezer, not everybody has a refrigerator. And some of the food that we get from the food banks is so rotten that by the time we get it home, it's unedible. So, I would appreciate it if you guys would, you know, try, try at your best to see what you guys can do to make sure that, you know, the homeless can get the help that they need. I do have some views on it, opening up a women's shelter that is not a battered woman's shelter. A lot of the women on the streets are not battered, they're just homeless. And a lot of the men at the, who live down here are so, are so bad with psychosis that they refuse to go to the shelter. So, we, I would also recommend maybe getting some people with Mojave Mental Health Care and/or, I cannot remember the name of the other one to save me, but Southwest, to try to get some homeless outreach through them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Teresa Bogler.
Very appropriate that this is National Literacy Month, so I thank you for what you do. I wanted to talk about the Club for Youth, which was working with 80 to 120 kids per day. And this was a year-long program. The Kingman Republican Women developed a literacy program and went in and started working with those kids who were at a 15% to 20% reading rate, and when we got done by state testing, they were at 70% to 80% reading ability. So, we'd like to get, yes, thank you, we'd like to get this building open again. Now, some of us who are shy went and talked with Hildy Angus and asked her, we're just assuming she's going to be our next state representative with John Gillette and Leo Biassucci, ask her what she could do. She's going to make some phone calls, and I'm going to follow up with her in a couple weeks. Went to the school to see if we could get a key to go into the old Club for Youth and have a contractor go and give us a bid or an idea what it's going to cost to upgrade this. The school, the project manager, who's only been there for three weeks, said, "Give me a couple of weeks to go talk to some people about this," and he said, "I'll get back with you." This is for our kids, this is for our community. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that the next time I'm up here speaking, I'm probably going to be asking for money. So, I'm going to give you a heads up that that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, Teresa. Stephen Robinson.
What Teresa presented is far more valuable than what I have to say, except I want to encourage the council to right a wrong from about six years ago regarding candidates for city council, now Mayor Watkins and Deana Nelson. He did not put me up to this, nor would he let me if he knew I was going to be talking about this. But we went to court, they went to court to get onto the ballot. State law requires that the prevailing party's legal and reasonable costs, including legal fees, be reimbursed by the government. The fact that their attorney made the mistake of not asking for it doesn't relieve the city of their obligation to pay those fees, even after six years. And I think it was around $12,000, and Mr. Watkins, Mayor Watkins can't talk about this, but I hope he will encourage the city manager Walsh to look at this. And, you know, to me, it's a minor thing, but it's something, when you have an obligation, the city should take care of it and pay it. And anybody that's left-handed like Cherish Semelley and I, we are right-minded people, so we would agree with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That's all for our call to the public. Number, item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, we have four items, I mean, two items, items A and B. Are there any questions or discussion that needs to be pulled? Mr. Savage and Mr. Walker, any comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good as well.
Real good. If there is no comment or discussion, then can we have a
Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry. A motion approving item number three, consent agenda.
Still moved.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, A, of under Old Business, consideration and action pertaining to the abandonment of a water line right-of-way. This item was tabled at the August 6th meeting when council directed staff to work with applicant David P. Tribett and the information he presented regarding the property in question being an easement versus right-of-way. Mr. Tribett had submitted his original request on behalf of the Tribett Family Trust to vacate, abandon, a water line right-of-way dedicated to the city of Kingman by Mojave County through docket 46, pages 297 and 298. Upon review of the information and further investigation by the city surveyor, and in cooperation with Mojave County Assessors Office, it was further determined that the right-of-way in question was, in fact, an easement. Although there are no other substantive changes, staff proposes to public notice the vacation or extinguishment of the easement and will bring the item back to the September 17th, 2024 city manager meeting, city council meeting. No action. Yes? Jay.
Mayor, council, thank you. Just as the introduction said, based on the information that was supplied by Mr. Tribett that night on August 6th, the additional information that we found by working with County Assessors Office, as well as our own surveyor, was determined that it was an actual easement. Therefore, we're, staff would like to bring it back with a revised recommendation before the council with the extinguishment back at the September 17th meeting. So, we're asking that you take no action tonight.
Council, any questions for Jason? And I don't hear any online either, Sean or Keith? Okay. Thank you, Jason. And we will see you back on September 17th. Item number five, new business, public hearing, consider the approval of resolution number 5528, approving solely for the limited purposes of section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code and section 163.01 Florida statutes, the issuance by the Capital Trust Authority of its revenue bonds in one or more series of tax-exempt qualified 501(c)(3) bonds or taxable bonds pursuant to a plan of finance in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $275 million, no more than $41,250, $250 million of which will be allocated to the city facilities for the purpose of financing the facilities located in the city of Kingman, Arizona. The city of Kingman was recently approached by Nixon Peabody Bond Counsel for Capital Trust Authority to request that the city of Kingman hold a public hearing for Capital Trust Authority to issue bonds for the purchase of a local memory care facility. Federal tax law requires that the city council hold a public hearing and approve of the bond issuance. Approval does not require the city to repay the bonds or provide any security for the bonds or have any liability associated with the bonds. The city of Kingman serves merely as an approval authority to help Capital Trust Authority satisfy its federal tax requirement. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 5528. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This is an interesting item. Ultimately, we're holding a public hearing because in order to allow for these bonds to be issued, the city is not involved in these bonds, we're not liable for these bonds. Just based on federal statute, we, we are required to hold the hearing. So, this is meeting those requirements so that this, these bonds can be authorized for this company.
Okay. Carl, any comment to add to that?
Nothing beyond that, but if there's any questions about what these are, how these work, there is some bond counsel online, one that is representing the organization, as well as, we have Andrew McGuire, who's done some bond work for us as well. So, if there's any particular questions, you can definitely direct them towards those folks. They'll have more in-depth knowledge than me.
Okay. Council, any comments or questions about this? Sean or Keith, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good as well.
Real good. Well, let's open a public heating, public hearing, I mean. We'd like to open a public hearing on item 5A of approval of resolution number 5528. Are there any comments or anybody here in chambers that would like to make a comment for this public hearing? Barbara, would like to come forward and please state your name? I know it, but
I'm Barbara Carpenter. I live in Kingman. Good evening, council and mayor. We have Lincoln Filter Center. Are we saying that we need another memory care center because we have too many people that need memory care? I'm just a little confused.
City manager, Tim, I'll let you, either one of you?
I believe it's the facility that's already here, and this is just for them to refinance and/or purchase this facility. And I think Brandon may be able to answer that. I believe that's the right person.
Yeah, that's Sebastian Meyer, okay, step in. That is correct, is it's an acquisition.
Brandon, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me?
That's better.
Yep. It is an acquisition of an existing facility.
So, I think they are buying one of the existing memory centers here in town, which is a 501(c)(3) to, at least as I understand it, to, once again, as it states in this, to continue, keep that 501(c)(3) status with the Internal Revenue Service, they have to have a public entity like the city of Kingman recognize their 501(c)(3). Does that sound right, about right, Carl?
It's just for the issuance of the bond, it's
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have nothing to do with bonding, financial, responsible, anything. It's just, they are purchasing one of the memory centers here in town.
And I didn't have a problem with that, I just was confused as, I guess I was worried that we have a lot more people that need memory care than we realized.
And just for point, it's White Cliffs Senior
Right, it's White Cliffs Memory Center.
Okay.
Senior Center.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments from the public, okay, we'd like to close this public hearing. Council, if there's no other discussion, let's have a motion approving item 5A, public hearing, and consider the approval of resolution number 5528.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 5528.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, B, solid waste report and recycling consideration. I am going to recuse myself on this issue, and I'm going to turn the time over to Vice Mayor Samley.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, Weldon Financial Services completed a solid waste rate study which resulted in the adoption of a new solid waste, of new solid waste rates that became effective on July 1, 2021. Each year since, the city has evaluated the solid waste system's financial plan to ensure these objections, objectives continue to be met. In performing the evaluation this year, it was found that the five-year projected revenues will not be sufficient to fund the five-year projected expenses. This will result in a cash reserve target that is below the industry standard and adopted working capital policy. Prior to the finalization of the rate study update, staff is presenting council with an overview of the solid waste funds rate structure and history, customer trends, and financial data. Staff will also review the history of the city's recycling programs, discuss options suggested by the Clean City Commission, and seek direction from council regarding a recycling program. Staff seeks council direction. Hello, Ms. Moline, welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members here and on Zoom with us this evening. So, every, periodically, let's say, city staff likes to present the council with an update on the services that are provided through our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and this evening happens to be our solid waste system. So, let's start with So, our solid waste system is funded through a single enterprise fund, and an enterprise fund basically means that it operates similar to a business. And that means that our users of the solid waste system pay for the system itself. So, the system does not rely on sales tax or state shared revenues or any other types of, types of funding sources. It relies on our solid waste charges, all of the fees. It pays for the operations of the system, the capital needs of the system, and any sort of new capital outlay, so our existing leases and new purchases. So, who are our customers and who's paying into the system? We have about 14,000 customers. Most of those customers are our residential customers, and we have about 1,000 commercial customers. I do want to, I do want to point out that our solid waste service is provided to customers who live inside the city limits, unlike those for our water and wastewater system who the service is provided outside of the city limits. So, this service is provided only to inside city, city limit customers. Also, our regulations require that we provide the service to our residential customers. However, our commercial customers have an option. They can use the city of Kingman's solid waste service, or they can use one of our third-party contractors. And I do think that, well, I know that I'm happy to report, that most of our commercial customers inside the city of Kingman's city limits use the city of Kingman's solid waste service and not one of our third-party providers. And certainly, Kingman is a growing community, so we do recognize customer growth in our solid waste service. Most of those, most of that growth is from our residential customers. As we're building new homes, certainly, we're adding containers and adding customers to, to our customer base. There are ebbs and flows in our commercial customers because they can choose anyone that they'd like. Sometimes we see higher growth in our commercial customers, sometimes lower growth in our commercial customers. What are some of the services that we provide? So, for our residential customers, we provide twice-a-week pickups. So, the Arizona Administrative Code does state that we are required to provide twice-a-week pickup unless we get a variance from ADEQ. And there are several providers and several cities throughout the state that do only provide once-a-week service, but we continue to provide that twice-a-week service. And we've heard from our customers that they do appreciate that service as well. For our commercial service, we have different-sized containers, we have different frequencies of pickups, anywhere from two times a week to six times a week, and certainly, those commercial customers pay for that service as well. And then we have what we call a bulk trash pickup. So, if we're out there cleaning our garage, or we're doing big landscaping work, we can leave those items on our sidewalks or right in front of our house, call our solid waste department, and they will come and pick those items up for a small fee, about $26 or so. So, that's something that we offer our residential customers only. And what do we pay for all of this? Well, our residential customers pay just over $20 for that twice-a-week pickup, and again, there are varying rates for our commercial customers ranging from $17 all the way up to, close to $1,000. So, anytime the finance department is up here presenting, certainly, we're going to look a little bit at the financial sustainability and condition of the system. So, our solid waste fund, if you look at the last few years, you'll see that our revenues have exceeded our expenditures, but you'll see that in fiscal year 24, we're expecting those to basically be in line with each other. When we in the finance department start to see that the revenues and expenditures trend at the same rate, we tend to want to evaluate the system, look at rates, look at costs, what can we do to cut costs? And that's where we are today, which is one of the reasons that we want to make sure that the council is aware of, of the solid waste system's financial condition. So, you'll see in fiscal year 24, our revenues and our expenditures are right in line, and we expect fiscal year 25 to be similar, if not maybe a little bit upside down. Part of that reason is a truck replacement program that, that we adopted, and it was through our solid waste rate study back in 2020. Council put into place a truck replacement program. Now, in order to provide the solid waste service, the largest capital cost is, are our heavy trucks. Back before 2020, we were spending less than $300,000 on one of those trucks. Today, and coming before you in just a few meetings, you're going to see that the cost of those vehicles are actually close to $470,000 apiece. Now, fortunately, the council adopted us utilizing a financing leasing program over a seven-year period, so that definitely helps with our rates and, and pushing the cost of those vehicles out over a seven-year period, but it's still very expensive for the system, especially when you're talking about a 25 to 26 truck fleet in our system that we have to replace. So, that's certainly one of the big expenses of our solid waste system. Let's talk a little bit about that solid waste rate study that we had conducted back in 2020. So, it was a pretty comprehensive study because we had not conducted a rate study for about 10 years. And so, we wanted to evaluate the actual cost of providing the different services. What does it cost to provide residential service? What does it cost to provide commercial service, as well as what would it cost to provide recycling service? At that time, we were offering a drop program At that time, we were offering a drop program, a drop recycling program at our Public Works facility. Just before we entered into this rate study, we ceased that operation. But knowing that it's definitely something we always want to bring back for the council to consider, we wanted to share what the cost of those, of the recycling program was. So in addition to evaluating that, we put together a five-year financial plan. We also set some reserves, some cash reserve targets. We also brought to the council a few different options, four different options to consider at that time as well. Two of them did include a recycling program. As part of that study, we conducted, oh, I'm not there yet, almost. So after the council looked at the different options, we ended up adopting a rates that included a residential rate increase of about 3%. Commercial customers experienced about a 40% increase, and the council decided at that time to not offer a recycling option. And we continued with our residential bulk trash, eliminated the commercial bulk trash. That took place in July of 2021. As part of that study, though, we wanted to reach out before the council made any sort of decision on what those rates would look like, and get some feedback from our customers. We sent out about 12,000 surveys, and we received almost 2,000 responses. So a pretty, a pretty good response rate. There were, I don't know, maybe six, seven, eight, eight questions or so. I want to talk about just a couple of the questions. So we asked about the four different options that we were going to be providing to council. One of those was, let's maintain our existing service by providing two times-a-week pickup. Your rate's going to go up about $1.29 a month. Do you, do you want us to, to do that option? Or do you want us to do that option and include recycling, but now your bill will go up more than $3 a month? Or do you want us to reduce your service to once a week? Or reduce your service to once a week and add the recycling option? 750 of the 1,0966 responses stated that they wanted us to maintain the existing level of service, the twice-a-week with no recycling option. So we shared that information with the council. We also had a question about, when we did have that drop program in place, how often were our customers using that drop program? And there were more responses that said never or rarely than responses that said they were using the system monthly or weekly. Close, but there were more of the, of those two responses. And then lastly, and I think it's always important to tout our solid waste team, our solid waste team, we have a national community survey that we send out or have sent out for quite a few years, but we also asked the question about the service that our customers receive from our solid waste team. Back in 2020, we asked that same question. And 88% of our customers said that they, they are very satisfied with the service that they received from our solid waste team, and that, that's the, that's the response that we received today and that we've received over the last few years. I just think it's always important to point out the great things that we are doing, and certainly, our solid waste team does just that. They perform, provide great service. So where are we now? So because of where we are with our financial condition, the finance department has completed a preliminary update of all of the data in the rate model that we used back in 2020. And the results, providing the service where, that we are providing today, is that we expect we'll need to bring back to council for consideration about a 6% revenue increase, which will correlate to about a 6% rate increase. That will be down the road, and I'll talk to that in just a, a little bit. The question becomes, right now, we are not offering a recycling option at all, and so should we incorporate a recycling program at some level? Now, about, I don't know, three or four months ago, I was in attendance at a Clean City Commission, and several city staff members were in attendance at that meeting. We know that our Clean City Commission is very passionate about recycling. And that conversation came up, recycling, and when the city might look at it. And so some of the suggestions that they had about recycling were these listed here. So can we go back maybe to putting recycling bins in the grocery store parking lots? Hey, there are a lot of online deliveries now through Amazon, so does Amazon have a recycling program for cardboard boxes? Do we need to have some sort of city facility that does recycling? And are there any ADEQ or grant funding opportunities out there to help us put back into place a recycling program? And then, of course, we do have some local providers that offer some recycling here and there, and do we want to partner with any of our local providers? And so what I'd like to do is ask our Public Works Director, Rob Owen, who oversees our solid waste system, to come up and speak a little bit to the history of our recycling program, since we did use to have a program in place, and then share what maybe some of these considerations might look like in the event the council directs us that way. Thank you, Rob. It's just, hey, scroll down, because I can't get it to.
Council members, thank you very much. I'm here as the resident old guy at the City of Kingman to give you some of the history on, on solid waste and recycling, so. And hopefully, we'll answer any questions you have along the way, but if you have any, please feel free to, to let me know. So back in about 2008 is when we started our drop program, and we call it here the Drop 1.0. At that time, we had set up several remote drop-off locations around the city, primarily at city parks, and also at some of the grocery stores. We had some at Bash's and some at the, the New Safeway at that time. And we, anywhere, and so we operated under this scenario from 2008 to 2019. The amount of employees we had varied throughout that time. Some of that depended on what was available for inmate labor. At that time, we were paying about 50 cents an hour for inmate labor, and then we had some set aside full-time employees. But those materials were assorted, it came in Public Works. Some of those, at that time, we had a local markets that we were taking paper and cardboard and plastic, aluminum, and steel to. Over time, that plastic market kind of changed, and the plastic and glass and the U-waste were all going up to Las Vegas. So some of the issues we had with the remote locations, they were not manned, they were available 24 hours for drop-off, was that we were getting a lot of people dumping their trash. You know, we have a pretty good chunk of the community that doesn't have mandated trash service, and this was kind of a handy way for some of those folks to get rid of their trash. You know, I think looking back, we probably didn't do as good a job as maybe we should have on the education, as far as what was actually recyclable and what was not. We had those transportation costs up to Las Vegas of about $600 per trip. Again, anytime with recycling, the, the markets for those commodities are changing, changing on a daily basis. And again, we were utilizing that inmate labor. That was, that's a great price for labor, but it's subject to, you know, it wasn't the most reliable labor source. Anytime there was an issue out at the prison, you know, they would not send those folks out. We also had some concerns from neighborhoods around those park sites where the drop sites were, and from some of those business owners about some of the, the messy conditions of people dropping around those containers. So back throughout that period, about the best we got as far as our statistics was, we were spending 20, a little bit over $20,000 a month to process about 91,000, or 91 tons, and that was about at a 50% contamination rate. So 2019, 2020, we brought all those containers into Public Works, created a, a little drop-off location there. It was staffed seven days a week. We specified the materials that were accepted. Again, we transported those materials to vendors, some of them local. At that time, more so of them, more, more of the bulk of it was to Las Vegas. Some of the challenges we had there was just site security. We kind of had people wandering around the Public Works yard, which, you know, we, we got better at that, but, you know, we have a heavy equipment operating, and, and we've got people through the yard, and we spent a lot of time directing people to where they needed to be. The, you know, the inmate labor, we utilized that, but then, you know, that's kind of when we were faced with the COVID crisis at that time, and there were a lot of unknowns, and the prison pretty much shut down its, its inmate labor program as far as sending people out into the community. So at that time, you know, our best month was about a little bit under $13,000 a month we were spending. That's processing 20, 20 tons of material, and the contamination rate, you know, did improve dramatically because it was a staffed site. So again, with COVID and the drop program suspended, that's about the same time that we started up. We're going through the rate study and the customer survey. Tina's touched on most of the important points of that. I guess I won't belabor that, but, you know, we did have the question about how often people use the drop facility, along with their preference, and at that time, it was the preference of the majority to continue the same service levels of twice-a-week trash So the current options for recycling, and these are the kind of calls we get, and this is the information we provide to people, you know, that these are the providers locally. Recyclops has kind of a, a subscription business that they do, that provide a bin to people, and depending on how often it's picked up, they charge a rate. And that's kind of a national company that operates, you know, around the country. KER is kind of the local vendor for metals. Bulldog Disposal is currently still accepting cardboard and other materials. And then Waste Management does offer a commercial recycling option for those commercial accounts of theirs. So as part of this, you know, I think every year, we try to do a review on recycling. This year, we, we went to a lot of field trips and talked to a lot of people. And talking with the ADEQ Recycling Coordinator, his estimations that about 50% of the communities that were recycling, and that's before COVID, have resumed that. And just in the area, like Cabusus City contracted with Republic Services, they still have weekly curbside recycling and a drop site. Bullhead City contracts with Republic Services, they have no recycling service provided. Flagstaff's a city operation, and Prescott's a city operation, both provide curbside recycling and a drop site. Sedona is an interesting case, and it, you know, it's a contracted service, they have three different providers down there. They have no curbside recycling, but they do have a nonprofit-run drop site. The city contributes about $250,000 a year to the operation of that facility. They also receive donations. They charge, you know, a certain number of commercial accounts that they have, some of the restaurants and, and grocery stores and such down there. Their overall budget's about $600,000 a year, and they kind of have a fluctuating, you know, employment base of, you know, paid employees and volunteer labor. Pintop's, again, another contract, contracted service with multiple providers. They don't have a curbside recycling, but they do have a collection center. They actually have a, they charge per item, so basically, you bring in your, your big leaf trash bag, and depending on what it, what's in it, they'll tell you how much it costs to drop it off. And they have a pretty substantial list of costs per material, and that's kind of how they, they run that facility. You know, one of the, I guess, I won't say criticisms, one of the points that's made when we were doing a drop program is that we weren't trying to process the material we were receiving to maybe where it would have a higher price or be more attractive to recyclable brokers, and, which is basically what a material recovery facility is. So some of the, again, you know, but as we look at this list of what goes on to it, and, you know, a MRF can vary from something very simple to something very extravagant. You know, we've been to, you know, MRFs that Waste Management or Republic had, and they're, you know, they are very sophisticated, and they serve, you know, greater regional areas. But, you know, there's a lot of people that do this on a lot smaller scale, kind of like Sedona did. And basically, they've got a site, but the other parts that go into it is, you know, they have a baler, so they're baling plastics, papers, they're baling all that, compacting all that, sort, well, I'm sorry, first, they're sorting it, and there's a cost for, you know, that equipment. They utilize some volunteer labor in Sedona. They put it through the baler, and then they stack it, and, you know, they have miscellaneous other equipment, loader, forklift, the labor. One of the bigger issues, and they're kind, it's kind of a tight location down there, but they, so they have to store all this material, and, you know, they're telling us it can take anywhere from two months to a year to accumulate a truckload for cardboard or plastic. So they, they store it there to that time, when they have a truckload, they work with a broker from Colorado that comes down and gets it. And, you know, depending on the commodity market then, is, you know, either if they're going to make a little bit of money on that, on that material, or if they're going to pay a little bit of money to, to, you know, for that broker to haul it off. And that's kind of, you know, that's the market, so that's changing all the time. And it's just kind of matter, it just depends where it is when you finally got a truckload of that material. So, you know, other than the pricing, and some of the other issues are fire risk, and you'll see a lot of material recovery facilities where they've got this material stockpiled for a long period of time, and they, they do have problems with fires starting. It's also possible that, you know, if you got your cardboard stored for a long period of time, and it's getting wet, you know, that you get contamination, you get mold growing in there, and then when you sell it off to a broker, you know, then you go on the, on the naughty list, and they're not going to buy your stuff anymore because it's not, you know, it's not usable. And then workplace safety was a big issue with some of the MRFs that we saw, you know, that, think that would be a big consideration for us. So again, the MRFs vary dramatically, and, you know, talking with the DQ coordinator, he's guessing that for a community our size, it would be somewhere between half a million dollars to a million dollars for a MRF for the basic rural facility. Some of the other ideas that the, were generated at the Clean City Commission was recycling bins in the store parking lots. You know, there may be a way to do that that we could research, but, I mean, that was kind of the issue before was the contamination, you know, if they weren't manned. And then just the, just the trash dumping that goes on, because when we, when we had those remote locate, locations, you know, most of what we were bringing in were just how, was just household trash. They also asked about the Amazon recycling program. Somehow Eddie managed to get somebody from Amazon on the telephone. I don't know how he did that, but he did. And they, they don't really offer a recycling program for that. They suggest that you work with your local providers on, on, you know, disposing or recycling that cardboard. So, you know, a lot of times, how you build your recycling program depends on what the, what the goals are, you know? Is it simply landfill diversion? Is it resource recovery? You know, whatever it is, you know, education is critical to that process. Some of the other considerations are just on funding rates. You know, if it's typically, in the past, we've looked at, you know, this had to be funded strictly from solid waste rates. But as the example from Sedona shows, you know, there are communities that use general fund, funding to support recycling in their community and consider, you know... fund, funding to support recycling in their community and consider it a quality of life issue. There are grant funding opportunities. In the very beginning of our program, we utilized an ADEQ grant for like the first two years. You know, it was like, I can't remember what, it might've been $20,000 or something, all told. But that program was on hiatus from 2009 until 2023. It has started back up. They have funded some projects, some equipment purchases. You know, it's a competitive grant program that could be beneficial to supplement a program, maybe not intended to pay for ongoing operations of a program. And again, with the Pine Top example, there's a charge, charge rates depending on the commodity types. And again, in Sedona, they were receiving donations. They'd actually, they've been in operation since the late 1980s and they have a pretty good network of pretty good-sized foundations that have funded them and have continued to fund them. They received some funding from the Walton Foundation and then a lot of smaller foundations. So they've, you know, they've a pretty strong foothold on the donations and funding part. So options with recycling, currently our status quo is when we get questions, we educate the public on what these other recycling resources are in the community. We could look to establish a new drop program at one location, like we had out at Public Works. There are challenges and opportunities with that. We could establish a new drop program that included some form of MRF where we would be processing this material to make it more easily, you know, to get it into the recycle stream easier and maybe with a little bit less cost, you know, if we are sorting, if we are baling, if we're storing. Again, there are challenges and opportunities with that. You know, with the MRF and with the storage, it's mostly about the area you would need and the upfront money you would need for the equipment. We could look to, you know, we could look and see what it would be or what it would take to start up a curbside recycling program, but you know, those are, a lot of those did not come back from COVID. The ones that did are because there's, like in Havasu, they still are doing curbside recycling, but that's an old contract with Republic down there and the contract in Bullhead with Republic is newer and it did not include the curbside option. And then obviously contracting it out or working to develop those other partnerships are things we could do. So I can try to answer any questions you have. I guess as far as, you know, tonight, we would be grateful for any kind of direction on what you want us to look at going into, you know, the future rate study discussions. We'll continue to research this. You know, there are new things happening. There's a new plastics recycling facility up in Las Vegas. You know, we need to get up there and take a look at that. I think that's a problem here is that there really is no place to take these water bottles. You know, there's nobody, other than Recyclops will take them, but I mean, there's no local vendors that are accepting them for drop off. Appreciate your time. Any questions or direction you would have?
Hi. Is that Sean, Councilor Savage?
Yes.
Did you have a question?
Kind of questions and comments. Hey, Tina and Rob, thank you so much. This has been on my brain for quite some time. I had to order a bigger trash can from the city because even though we're getting it three times a week, we have a lot of trash and there's a lot of cardboard, a lot of glass, a lot of plastic. Can you research, especially for commercial businesses that go through that much, for a possible company to bring a glass bucket, a cardboard bucket, a plastic bucket and let the businesses kind of cycle through that? And maybe we can have locks on that so it's not getting used by other people trying to fill our trash cans?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And that's actually, that's a great question and remind me of a couple of points I meant to make that I did not make. You know, we received a question about composting our cardboard, accepting cardboard and composting it out at the Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant. And that is possible.
Now, would that be a way that we could help offset costs if we get the businesses to kind of go together instead of having like, I know we used to have the stuff at Centennial Park, but for a commercial business to haul all that over there, it's just not conducive.
Yes, sir. But I guess on the cardboard question that was asked that I didn't address earlier, but we could compost cardboard, certain cardboards out at the treatment plant with the bio salads. It would have to be shredded first and it would have to be sorted. Typically, any kind of glossy or shiny cardboard, from my research, is not suitable for that. And the other thing we would have to do was make sure that it wouldn't interfere with any of our permitting or end product out there at the treatment plant, but I don't suspect that would be an issue at the time. We had received a question about collecting glass. I know that in the past, we had talked to Potter Industries out at the airport about that. That was quite a while ago. At that time, they had pretty specific specifications on what they would take and that did not include, you know, raw glass like that from us.
Yeah, my concern is beer bottles and liquor bottles, there's a lot of businesses that have a lot of that stuff.
If we were to haul it up there, they would probably pay us somewhere between 10 to 30 bucks a ton for it. You know, again, those trucking costs, we'd have to update what those would be to take it up there. The alternative would be that we could contract that trucking out and they would accept it without, you know, without paying us. There are other options and there's a lot of research that we've done, but there's still more to be done and we'll keep working on that. But again, if there's any other direction on areas to explore, we work with this stuff a lot, but there's a lot of other people doing things and we can't know it all. So we're looking for any.
Did that answer your question, Councilor Savage? I'll get you a Councilor Ward after, Councilor Staley.
Hi. Okay, so I wanted to just point out one inaccuracy in that is that over half, barely over half of the respondents in the solid waste customer survey results recycled monthly or weekly, it wasn't less than half. And then if you look at just total numbers of anybody that recycled, it's like three quarters of the respondents. So that's, those are good numbers. We had people that were recycling and they were dedicated to it. And I, after listening to this report, which sounds like every reason not to recycle, everything that could go wrong, you know, Commissioner Hollins, Councilmember Eric and I sat through a presentation with ADEQ, Pine Top, Lakeside, Sedona, talking about recycling and their attitude about it was a night and day difference from what we're hearing tonight. They were very positive about the programs that they were putting in place. Pine Top Lakeside only charges $3 for a 50 gallon barrel size of recycling and they have people traveling four hours to get there. You sort it yourself, you put it in your own bins and they are experiencing a lot of success with that program. And they're not burdening anybody with curbside, you know, or forcing people to recycle. You go in, you separate it yourself and then they have different providers that are using those materials and some of it they are driving to Phoenix. The biggest thing that they're seeing in their recycling program is yard waste and they are able to reuse that. We can reuse that as mulch. We can make mulch, we can make topsoil, we could use that in our parks or another suggestion we heard was once or twice a year, you sell that to the community, you sell it back. Those are all feasible things to do with yard waste that's currently being sent to the dump at this point and we're paying for that. Those costs should balance out, you know, not dollar for dollar maybe, but it's less waste that's going in the trash can to be picked up. We could try a smaller drop off, just like we had before at Public Works and maybe we don't take plastic, maybe we just start with metals, yard waste and cardboard and then see how that reduces what's being put in the trash cans and that cost on that side. And then that maybe isn't necessarily going to affect the price increase. I think we also need to do a new customer study. Four years ago, this is a long time for a customer service study and to get feedback from the public. That was COVID. Nothing is the same since then. Nobody's living the same since then. So we need to reach back to our clients or to our citizens and ask them what their expectations are and what they want to see. I constantly hear from people, why can't we recycle in Kingman? Why can't we get this together? Recyclops is not an option. I had them, I paid for the service, they didn't show up. So you can't refer people to Recyclops when it's not a reliable resource. But people around town did try to hire them because they were willing to pay, you know, the extra money. It was like $14 a month for them to come twice a month to pick up. So our citizens want recycling and I think that we need to dig deeper and do a better job of finding options that work for our community. And maybe that isn't recycling everything, but it's starting somewhere and we can see how we can make this work instead of just saying it's impossible. You know, when I first got on the city council, I was tired of hearing, well, it's Kingman, what do you expect? We were brainwashed to believe that we couldn't have the same amenities that other communities have. Bullhead has it, like Havasu has it, Sedona, Bisbee, Arizona, like tiny towns with small budgets are able to make this work. Why can't we figure it out? Why can't we make this work for our community? When we said we were going to put in an interchange, how many people told me it was impossible? It would never happen. Downtown improvements, impossible, never going to happen. Getting our airport and industrial park functioning and bringing in new jobs and new employers, not in Kingman, no way, never. But we have solved these problems that were expensive, that we thought we didn't have the money for, that we could never do. No one ever did it. How can we not solve this very small, little recycling program? We need to start somewhere and we need to dig in and really be innovative in our thinking so that we can provide the service to our citizens.
Councilor Walker, I will get to you. Councilor Ward?
I don't have a problem with any recycling that pays for itself. If it doesn't pay for itself and it has to be subsidized by everybody, I'm definitely not in favor of it. I've seen it. Where I lived before, they forced this curbside recycle. They charged us eight bucks a month. Within a year, it was all going in a garbage truck. And then you still pay the eight bucks a month even though they're dumping it all in the same truck. So then they did a joint city, county and nonprofit built this facility to separate it and recycle and you could take it there for nothing. Some of it they didn't even pay you for, but after about the fourth time it exploded or burnt, they tore it down and moved it out. I mean, I'm not in favor of any forced recycling. If it pays for itself, I'm fine with it. If it don't, I don't think so. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilor Walker?
I have a question for Rob. When we did our curbside recycling before, was it one time a week recycle, one time a week trash or was it two times a week trash, one time a week recycle?
Yeah, it was a pilot that we did for just a little bit over a month and it was once a week trash and once a week recycle.
Okay. And how did it work? Were you getting trash in the recycle or how was our contamination on that?
We weren't picking up a whole lot of recycling at that time. I think a lot of, you know, a lot of other communities that still have curbside have gone to where it's not every week, it's, you know, every couple of weeks or every third week or something, but you know.
Yeah, I know Chandler does one and one and it's, I don't know, that might be a good town to ask if you have resources down there and ask them how their recycling's going because I could kind of see how it could contaminate your recycle material. That was my question for you and I have a question for Tina if she comes back up later. And if we did recycle, I think if we limit what we're taking, you know, if it pays for itself and, you know, if it's costing us thousands of dollars to get rid of, it's probably not worth it. And also what is our rates versus the other cities? That's something for Tina as well. I'll wait on that one.
Councilman Walker, Vice Mayor, asked that I approach and try to respond to your question. So I don't know off the top of my head what the rates are in comparison to other cities. I can tell you what our rates are in comparison to our local providers. And again, we provide twice a week service and our rates are lower than our local providers who provide, I believe, once a week service.
Okay. I would like to know the rates of the other cities that are recycling, if we could do that for our next meeting. And then I'd like to go back to, I know we haven't discussed this, but I know we discussed it a year ago, maybe two years ago. What's the rate for the residential can? And then we have the same can that we give the businesses, that we're giving that to them cheaper. It almost looks like residential subsidizing commercial. I still think we need to pull those two prices together. It's the same can, same truck. I know somebody's going to argue with me, it's different trash, but no, it's not because the people that live in the county are bringing their trash in and throwing it in those small commercial cans.
Councilman Walker, I'm happy to respond to that question and concern and that is something that city staff will be bringing back for the council's consideration, making those rates aligned and so there isn't that perception. So thank you for that.
Okay. Was there something that happened in the last two years? Because I know I brought it up last time and I was told, no, it's different. And I don't, you know, I just, what's changed? I'm glad it changed.
Yeah, I don't know that there was anything different. I think it was just that we were raising rates by 40% across the board for commercial and that's what we did for those cans as well. So, and I believe when the rates were adopted back in 2020, that we were posed with that question as you were adopting the rates and we recognized that and when we brought back new rates, we were going to take a look at that and we are.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments for Rob?
I just, I had a comment. At the very least, I would like to see something out of Public Works for like cardboard. I feel like a lot of waste, a lot of, you know, trash cans get full with cardboard and that seems like a waste that would be easy for people to transport, get rid of, it's very bulky. You know, if we're going to start something and we're going to start small, let's just start with some cardboard waste receptacles.
All right. Anybody else have any other comments? Oh, yep, Councilor Stanley?
Tina, when you come back to talk about the rate study, I am really curious, out of all the trash trucks that we were expected to buy over the last few years, how many we actually purchased? And I'd like to see some numbers on, like in '25, we're supposed to buy three trash trucks. What if we only bought two or one? And how would that impact this increase and maybe if there was a way to avoid that, especially after that huge increase on commercial?
Yeah, absolutely. I can look at that. Thank you, Councilwoman Staley. I can share that over the last three years, since the rates have been in place, that we were supposed to have in our possession 10 trash trucks. We only have six and that was from several years. We only have six, and that was from several years ago. We still have a few that we have ordered, um, but have not received. And yes, this year, we're supposed to order a few more. So, but we can definitely bring that back to you as well. Um, if I, if I can just walk through these next steps and, and share with the council what's next and what city staff was thinking was next. Certainly tonight, we wanted to hear about the direction that you're giving us on a recycling program. I think that we've heard from a majority of the council members some things to bring back for consideration. Certainly putting together costs and researching doesn't just take a couple of months, it takes some time to do that. So what we were hoping to do is work on that over the next few months and bring that to you for the upcoming budget cycle. Be able to, if, if it's something that we need to buy equipment or hire people, it's gonna be costly. We wanna make sure that we appropriate that, so have something for you during budget discussions. In the meantime, bring back to you a solid waste, our solid waste, general solid waste service, uh, pickup service for your consideration. The rates for that in October, bring some options to you. Hopefully then in December, hold a public meeting on those and get those rates into effect in February. Uh, that's, that's what city staff was hoping you would be comfortable with for next steps.
Councilor Staley?
Um, and what about doing a new survey?
One hundred percent. Thank you for saying that. Absolutely. We heard you. We've got, I do have the notes. I'm sure Rob's got the notes. City manager definitely has the notes. We will definitely do a customer survey in that meantime as well, before we bring back some sort of, uh, options for you to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Rob. Mr. Cooper, you had a comment?
Yeah, um.
If you could step to the mic, please. And in the future, if you wanna speak on an item, just check with the clerk first.
Got it.
But go ahead.
What about those of us who are on limited income and can't actually afford recycling? Is there gonna be a subsidized thing for people with limited income?
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I would say that the council will make those decisions and will certainly bring different options to the council, whether that's, uh, that you opt in or whether that's an across-the-board. Those will be some options that we will bring to you.
Thank you, Tina. Stay tuned. Thank you. Did we wanna get the mayor?
There you go. I'm not gonna hide duck your meeting. Welcome back.
I had a nice nap. No, no, I didn't. Moving on to our agenda, item five C. Let's hold on one second. Yeah, see, this is not good, huh? There, turn it on. Um, yeah. Five C, council direction on procuring the National Community Survey Tool. The city utilized the National Community Service, formerly National Citizen Survey, in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two to get a representative and comprehensive picture of livability through citizens' perspectives about the city's services, policies, and management. With the leadership changes that transpired in two thousand twenty-three, the city opted to forego distributing the survey last year. City staff is seeking council direction on whether to continue with the National Community Survey or to utilize another citizen-serving tool. The cost of the National Community, Community Survey is eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars and was included in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget and capital improvement plan. Staff seeks council direction. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, this item, we wanted to bring before you to get your input on whether or not we should continue with the, the existing survey that we've used for a number of years or if there was a, a different option that the council would like to seek. Um, the existing survey is a set of set questions that we've, and we've used it as, as mentioned in the backup. We've used it for a number of years, and benefits to the survey are, it is the same survey that's offered in a number of cities nationwide. So we're able to, to look at the results versus, you know, the, the results that other cities get and able to compare ourselves that way. Uh, the other, the other thing is we're able to, it, it's the same questions year over year, so we can see how we're doing as a city as time goes on. Um, I, my intent in bringing this to you was to, to see if, if council is happy with this survey, we can continue with it. Um, or if there are better questions, uh, more specific questions that council would like to ask and get that feedback, um, we can go a different route, craft those questions, get them approved by council, and then send them out to, to our residents. Um, so really, that's, that's the intent of this item, is, is really just to get council's direction on whether to stay with the existing survey or to, um, perfect, you know, go, go a different route and, and get some more specific questions. Thank you.
Um, any comments or questions for Tim, Councilor Staley?
Oh, Sean, go ahead. Yeah. Being that the last survey that was done, of course, myself and Smiley weren't there, Eric wasn't there. Um, how did those work for us? And what was it specifically that was surveyed?
So, Councilman Savage, just, there, there was, I'm looking at the survey that was sent out in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and there were about fifteen, fourteen, fifteen questions, and they covered, um, you know, quality of life in Kingman, uh, characteristics that, of Kingman, healthcare, uh, economic health, uh, let's see. Just a number of, of general questions about living in Kingman, um, things that people like, things that they don't like. And, and gives them the option of, you know, excellent, good, fair, poor, or don't know. And, and really, as they go through these questions and, and, you know, to say there's fourteen questions, I, I think is a little bit deceiving. Um, within, within those numbers, there's a, a long list of, of items to, to check your, your opinion on. Um, you know, from street repair to city parks to yard waste pickup. I mean, you, you name it, we, we've got a number of items in here. And, and basically, the, the company that we use sends this out, um, to a select group of people. Basically, they look at the demographics of Kingman. Um, they have a selected group within each of those demographics. They send the item, or the surveys to, um, and then based on the responses back, then they're able to use, um, the, whatever formulas that they have to, to kind of, uh, generalize those responses over our, our population. And then utilizing that, those numbers, um, then compare it to other cities to be able to see how we rate with other cities.
How did that help with steering the council with their decisions?
I, I think that would be a, a question better posed to council. I, I don't know if council would like to respond to that. Um, not having been here when the last one, uh, was done. I, I know definitely that it's something that, that council has looked at those responses to see, you know, what areas are we doing well in? What, what areas do our citizens feel we need to improve? And I think it does help, uh, you know, during the budget process as well, but please.
Yeah, I would, um, say that we, we would review them normally at a council meeting. We should have reviewed this last one, but we were going through changes. So you can look at it and you can see where, where, what you're doing right, what needs work. Um, I think that we used them often when we were talking about where to, um, budget money and, and where, kinda what our future goals should be.
Sean, it also, it really addressed livability.
Yes.
And that's really what the focus is, is livability and what Kingman has to offer. So not only from a tourism standpoint, but also from somebody relocating here and what services and that kinda stuff are. Once again, it boils down to livability and making a better life for everybody here in Kingman.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Council, any other questions or comments? Oh, Keith?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I kinda like the way it is. It gives us a baseline that we can base where we were and where we're going. And, you know, to change it now, Mike, we'd have, have to start over, but we could keep doing it. But I think staying where we are gives us a good baseline.
Good comment. You know, I think we have it budgeted. I, I see the value in it. I know council, it seems like Councilor Staley does too. I appreciate that, and others. So, Vice Mayor?
I just, my only comment is I'd like to see it go out to more of, I, I don't know that it's getting out
Good point.
to a great number of people. And, I mean, it's very lengthy. So although you say, like you said, it, there's questions within questions within questions. So, um, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if the length of it is prohibiting response, you know, the number of people to respond to it. But I, I would like to see if we can get it out to more individuals because if the length of it is deterring people from completing it, if we put it out to that many more people, maybe we can get more responses.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, um, and actually, I might lean on, on Tina, if I may. Um, having, her having been here in, in previous surveys, I, I believe past practice has been to utilize the, the firm that, that puts this together, uh, to send it out in a targeted way. But then, uh, the city also will put it out on, on our websites in order to, to get it out there as much as possible, but please.
Thank you, um, Manager Walsh. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for your question. So there are different tiers for pricing, of course, and we can definitely, uh, send it out to more. We typically send it out to about twenty, anywhere ranging from two thousand to twenty-six hundred, uh, uh, citizens. But we can certainly send it out to more. There are different options. It would just cost a little bit more to Manager Walsh's point. Once the survey's completed and we have those algorithmic responses, then we do post it on our website for anyone to respond to. We don't typically really, uh, use that as our baseline since they're not that random sampling. But it is interesting to see those results as, as well. But definitely, there is that option. So if that's the direction of council, we can certainly, certainly do that.
So I would like to, we have our Past Citizens Academy citizens that have graduated. I would like to, at least, if we can also select that group to send it out to as well. I, I feel like they will give us some, some great insight and input. Um, and knowing, having been through the Citizens Academy, understanding how the city works, um, the challenges that we're up against, I, I would write, really like to have responses from them as well. So if, if that could be a focus group that it goes out to as well.
So Vice Mayor, it's a random sampling, and in order to keep those results, again, algorithmic, uh, we, we can't dictate who those go to, but we can certainly send the survey to the Citizens Academy.
Correct.
Participants, yeah.
That's what I'm looking for. I don't wanna jeopardize the integrity of the random sampling. But I wanna make sure that it gets out there so that at least we can have the two different, uh, versions of it.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Tim and Tina, I think council, I think we're interested, but I think we'd like maybe even a little, some more sampling, a larger percentage. So before we make a decision, I think we'd like to get those costs. Uh, we have this one cost, and that's probably for what was, what we've done in the past. So if we can move that to a, a future council meeting, and it shouldn't take very long to find those costs out, right?
So Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on Tina one more time. Um, I, I know timing, in order to get these results back in time to, to be able to incorporate them into the budget, um, we're, we're getting down to the wire on that. Um, it may be beneficial, and I don't know if Tina might have kind of a ballpark for the, the next tier of, of samples. Any idea on what that might cost?
I can give a ballpark, again, just memory, seeing it come through. I didn't pay a lot of attention to it. What I wanna say, about twenty thousand dollars. I wanna say maybe four thousand is what, around that range. Uh, and I believe there's another tier on top of that, and I have no idea what the cost is, uh, for that one. So, or, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
What's the current sampling right now?
About twenty-five, twenty-six hundred.
Okay.
So.
I'd like, I'd like to see us go up to the four thousand, if council's amenable.
At least. I mean, I, I like a ten percent crosscut, but I don't know. Councilor Ward, what's your thoughts on this?
Uh, definitely a bigger sample's gonna help us, but, uh, depending on the cost.
Okay.
If, if I might make a suggestion, right now for the twenty-five hundred, we're looking at about eighteen thousand eight hundred. If, if I might make a suggestion to council of, of maybe a cap of, of say thirty thousand cost-wise, and then we can get as many as, as we can get for that amount, is that feasible? Does that, that would work for finance?
Whatever you'd like, Manager Walsh.
And budget-wise, does this come out of tourism because it is also part of tourism, or where does this come out of?
It's not. It's about the citizens who live here in the community, and so it comes out of the general fund.
Okay.
And we do only have eighteen thousand eight hundred and some dollars, well, nineteen thousand dollars budgeted for it, but we can certainly identify another eleven thousand dollars if that is the will of the council.
Council, I'm okay with that.
That's higher than I wanted to go, but.
We can bring it down.
If you want to lower that, you can.
I just wanted to go up to the next tier. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay. It's whatever the council agrees to. I, I don't think we need to spend an, you know, a huge amount of money doing a sampling. I just wanted, you know, a next level of, of sampling, so.
Manager Walsh, if, if I can make a suggestion, so if we push this out another two weeks and we bring you the costs with the different, um, sampling, it will push out the report another two weeks. But I think that we might be able to still get that by the end of January, if that works for you and the timing for the budget.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Sean.
Tina, what was the percentage replies we got on the last sampling we did?
So just under, yep, thank you so much, Councilman Savage. So we received just under five hundred, I wanna say, responses. So what is that?
That's the frustrating part of it. Okay. Sean, good question. Councilor Walker, one more comment?
I'm good with going up to where you were talking about. That would be fine.
Okay. Well, Tina, if you.
I think the more, the better. I really do.
Okay. I think we're in agreement. So if you, if we can get it in within two weeks, either that or we pass something like limited to twenty-five thousand. So we could do that tonight too, council?
I'm good with the two weeks.
Okay. Tina, I think we have two weeks.
One more question, if I may. How does this go out? I mean, we have an independent firm sending it out. Does it go out in a, is it identified as this is a survey for the city of Kingman? Do they, is it look like junk mail, or are they just throwing it away?
So, great question, Councilman Walker. So there are postcards that go out first announcing that, hey, you're gonna be receiving a survey. The postcard is, actually has the city of Kingman logo on it, and it is signed by the city manager. Then they receive the actual survey in the mail, and then they receive at a later date, uh, a special link that is assigned to each of the households that receive the mailed survey to be able to actually go online and submit the survey as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tina, we will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, department reports, six A, Kingman Youth Advisory Council update. Sophia Meredith.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Um, like Mr. Watkins said, my name is Sophia Meredith, and I'm just here to give you guys a quick update on the Kingman Youth Advisory Council. Um, so just to start out with, our application went live at the beginning of August, and the newspaper also did a brief article on it, kinda getting the word out, making sure Kingman's aware of it. Um, and it did really well. And we have also included our own page on the city website for people to check out if they have any questions, if they're wondering about it, getting to know us, um, really getting the word out for them as well. And I have met with all three high school principals, and everyone was extremely open, everyone was super supportive, it was awesome. Um, most of them already had kids in mind, um, which was really awesome to hear from them, to know that we had the school support as well. Um, I also, this past week, got to attend the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, where I was honored to represent my city through, um, doing the, oh my goodness, doing the parade of flags with Mr. Watkins. That was super cool. I also got to sit on sessions about advocacy and policymaking best practices, as well as the opportunity to network with other youth coalitions within our state, which was very interesting. It was good to see how they work, what they like to do, what worked for them. Um, I also had the amazing opportunity to get to know our council members better, which was awesome. It was a great opportunity. Um, as of today, we have received several applications that'll be reviewed this week to make our final round of appointments to the council. And next week, there is a youth leadership synopsis in Florence that we hope to take a few of those unattended members to. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments for Sophie? And Sophie, you, you proudly carried our city flag, and I follow, follow you helping hold it up, so I appreciate that at, at last week's meetings.
It was fun. I enjoyed it a lot.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Uh, Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick announcement that our, um, Citizens Academy is still open. It closes September twelfth, and there are a few spots left in that. So that's, that's coming up quickly. Um, also, as, as Sophia mentioned, um, we have received.
Um, also, as, as Sophia mentioned, um, we have received a number of applications for the, uh, youth, youth commission will be reviewing those and getting that out. Uh, I would just say if, if you have, if there are kids out there that haven't applied yet, please still apply. We, we will still consider those. We had it closed last Friday, but, um, we'd be happy to look at any applications that still come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I forgot to ask Sophie, but Manager Walsh or Sophie, how many applications have we received so far?
So we received up through Friday, I want to say right around 10 or so. So we'll be reviewing those and, and looking at that, but we, we do have room for more if, if there are more kids out there that would like to apply.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Councilor Walker, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Savage?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Ward? Councilor Staley?
Um, unfortunately, um, Teresa already left, but I wanted to, um, let the community know, for those that haven't heard, is that a Boys and Girls Club will be reopening in Kingman. Um, it, they are hoping, we, we spoke to the representatives when we were in Phoenix at the League of Cities, and they are hoping to have it open by October. They're going to take all school ages, um, up to seniors and high school, and, and they will be located on Airway in Burbank, um, in the, uh, commercial building that's owned by the hospital. So that is a really exciting update for the, for our, uh, youth and for the families here in Kingman that have really missed having a Boys and Girls Club and those after-school activities.
Thank you, counselor. Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, I attended the Parks and Recreation Golf Commission. Uh, the fall catalog, uh, for our citizens will be out tomorrow, so be watching for that. Uh, I attended the Vet Court graduation. It's always heartwarming to see those vets graduate from Judge Singer's Court. And, um, such a sense, sense of accomplishment. So I always appreciate the invite and being able to attend there. And then, um, I attended the city of, uh, yeah, Arizona League of Cities and Towns last week as well, so, um, with several of you, so. It was, it was great. Got to network and, um, learn a lot, different sessions. And, um, Kingman was represented in one of the sessions, and, um, I hear that, uh, Ms. Sarah Ferry did a fabulous job, so, um, in representing Kingman and talking about our downtown. So, um, I want to give her some special, uh, recognition for attending on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks for bringing it up. Uh, I think we were well represented at that League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference. I've been out of town for the last week and a half, and I'm just glad to be back in town, back home in the great town of Kingman. And, uh, anyway, thanks for all of you for making it a great town. Item number eight, council request for future reports and updates.[1770.61]